Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. I move to call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Mrs. Schultz, you call the board.
Trustee Harcomeyer?
Here.
Trustee Burden?
Present.
Trustee McAbby? Absent.
Please, everyone, will you rise? We have the best this evening. Pastor Joe French of the Indian Springs Church will lead us in the invitation. Then remain standing, and we will have our Girl Scouts from Troop 46A29 lead us in the pledge.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity just to be here, Lord. Change of seasons, change of times, but following the needs of our nation, probably never more greater. We have people of harm and who risk way. We pray that you might use us as a body of people, a band together to be of help. Help our neighbors, help our nation. Lord, I pray it might bless this meeting. I pray it might give us the opportunity of using and utilizing wisdom and grace here. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make an motion to amend the agenda to add an action item to approve or deny FTZC24-C-3C Final PUD to take place after our consent agenda. And then I'd like to also add executive session at the end of the agenda before adjournment according to ORC 121.22G1 to consider the discipline appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harcomeyer?
Yes. Okay, we have a number of presentations tonight. I would like to invite a Girl Scout troop, 46A29. I believe you have some things to show with us. Please, get a portion of the podium.
Dear Council members, our Girl Scout troop would like respectfully present our community project for your consideration. We researched several ideas and came up with the idea of creating a flag deposit or a box for our community. While we design our potential ideas for how the box should look, it causes us to think about what the flag means to us and why it is important to properly dispose of our American flags. According to our research, the American flag is one of the most recognizable flags in the world because the United States, along with countries like China, Korea, and Russia, is a major world power. Yet, our flag is one that sticks out in most people's minds aside from their own country's flags. The colors are bold and bright. The stars and stripes are clean and linear. But it is more than that. The red symbolizes bravery and valor. The white symbolizes purity and innocence. The blue symbolizes vigilance. Our nation's history is visually represented on our flag. The 13 stripes for the original 13 colonies and 50 stars for each state. Each star is separate from one another, but they all rest among one another in a sea of blue. Just like our states have their own character in history, yet they are all a part of one another in this great country. The flag is also a reflection of who we are as Americans. The bright colors stand out from all other countries' flags, and we Americans are often distinguished by our bold and confident spirits. The flag, while made of pumplac, holds the ideals and the values that we fight for a freedom that isn't free. This freedom is so dear that millions of citizens have gaved the ultimate sacrifice protecting it. The flag inspired our national anthem as Francis Scott Key was negotiating the release of an American captive during the War of 1800. He marched us through the battle of... Thank you. Can't read that part, I apologize. At the end, Henry was turning towards the British. He was sure that the British flag would soon claim victory by dawn. While being bombarded for 24, 5 hours, he saw the American flag flying defiantly while the bombs illuminated it. This inspired him to write the Star Spangled Banner. Later, "All Glory" as a flag that's sometimes known as "Two Daringly" during the storming of the beaches of Normandy. As many young men pushed through the German fire and gave it hope to help change the course of World War II. This same flag gave us hope, comfort, and rallying spirit after the devastation of the events of 9/11 as well. During this time, many homes and businesses flew the flag and many vehicles put flags on their cars to show the world and ourselves that our spirit was not broken. The American spirit is unbreakable, though at times we may bruise, bend, or go through painful growth periods. Just like our flag, we will rise again and stand proud in the sunlight. Just as time will eventually leave even the bravest and strongest veterans' home, our flags that weathered through many seasons and many storms are eventually called home to rest. Our flag box will help our citizens to place their flags, be taken away and disposed of with great honor and respect. Please consider our project for Heroes Park as we believe that our box would be the perfect addition to a place that already honors our own American heroes.
That was absolutely beautiful.
Wonderful.
Absolutely beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Ladies, thank you so much for this. I think this is going to fit very well here in Fairfield Township, and I really like how it's interactive. I absolutely love what you read. If we could get a copy of that, too. I would like to just include that with our township records because that was just absolutely beautiful. And thank you for your hard work and effort on this. I can tell that you really put your hearts into this. And as a strong American to another, to all of you, that just touched my heart. Thank you so much for doing this.
I have a question. That's okay to ask. So how often is there a break schedule where you come and take the flags? Or how often would you need to do that? Because that'd have to be worked out.
Well, the idea is monthly to make sure that it's not damaged during any type of storm or anything. But we are looking for our local BMW to kind of work with us as a holding. We know that there's a local BMW that works with the Veterans Park. Remember, we have to live first, and it's kind of our home territory. But we can also work with our local Boy Scout troops as well, or Girl Scout troops. Please, we want to make sure that they're properly disposed of. The girls actually got to place a flag when they made their box. They actually had a pattern applied from Hurricane Helen. So it's actually already a flag that the girls took down themselves and put in there.
And when will this be placed? Have you coordinated that with the administrator already? When it will be placed?
Not yet. Hopefully, since hopefully it's approved, we're going to figure out the installation date. My husband's going to also weather for it, so we'll stand on higher weather.
Okay. So I'm assuming we just have that. We don't need to approve formally approve that. I guess we should have approved the donation, but...
Except the donation.
Yeah. And then just coordinate it with our administrator, like timing. Our system administrator, he just loves parks. But just coordinate with the office as far as when it's going to be arriving, where it's replaced, how it's going to be secured. I'm not sure how heavy it is, but it should be secured in some way, shape, or form with the ground so it doesn't flow over or get knocked over. Because kids ride their bikes back there and run around and things like that. So probably something that holds the American flag should be secured to the ground so it doesn't accidentally get knocked over or destroyed. So, yeah. It's not hard. You and Mr. Gummens can coordinate that if you agree. And then, once it's placed, if you all could just come back and take a picture with it and coordinate that with our staff as well so that we can get that on our Facebook page and you have places item, and it's there for our residents to use.
And you and then you can ask some of that what we just heard, read this evening as well. And maybe you want this as well.
I have an idea.
Well, if you think about it, just contact our administrator. That's the best way of getting ahold of trustees. Great. Well, thank you, ladies, very much. You did a great job with it. Very impressive. Looking forward to its use. Again, we don't need to... It's a nice civic lesson to see the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to stick around for it. But we don't have a very long agenda tonight.
Okay, our next item, we have Borders Around the World Christmas Watchel. Pastor French?
Yeah, I'd like to present in light of Jonas James Mulhume, who's not here. He's actually in the Congo right now. And Jonas is a long-term resident of Fairfield Township, an immigrant to our nation from the Congo. If you might remember your days when you were in school. And I want to kind of apologize to these young ladies. I thought one of them wanted to sing the National Anthem. Well, no, okay. They're worried about you maybe saying it. But Jonas is a Fairfield Township resident. He's also has a mission that's cooperative between the states and Congo. You may remember in your civic days, there was the Belgian Congo and the French Congo. The French Congo, the Democratic Republic of Congo today, is his homeland. And though we're facing the storms that have blown through the south, that's what would destroy normal life. In Congo, Jonas does his best to help. There is no normal life. So he's now, as a US citizen and citizen of the township, diligently involved in arranging for donations to give the basic necessities that we take for granted every day. So if the township could help us in that project, it'd be a wonderful endeavor to not only have our bright future here, Fairfield Township, here in beautiful State of Ohio, but also have our hands out reaching the entire world. And I think it's a worthwhile project. He's a great fellow. And some collection box boxes in our different buildings around the township make it an easy contribution. And all of that will be packaged and shipped directly to them in the Congo. So it's pretty much a collection agency as opposed to all the logistics being handled by Jonas himself, the white woman. Any questions?
So you're just looking at asking to put some boxes here, put some stuff on Facebook, social media with listed names. And then someone can bring them in during business hours? And then he'll be responsible for making sure that gets where it needs to go?
I'll be responsible.
And you'll be responsible?
We're partnering with him to get it there. Matter of fact, he's in the Congo now preparing for that because it's numbered up in outreach that helped him in this area. Great guy, you have never had a chance to meet him. When we get this completed, I'll have Jonas back over to me as well. He is probably one of the most personable Fairfield Township residents you ever meet. And he's one of the blessed citizens of Menlo. He's just a great guy. He's wonderful. Any other questions?
This is Paulier. You don't see any... Sorry, you don't see any legal reason that we could not have this placed in our township votes?
No.
Thank you.
The next item is our final PUD plan for optimized senior living. Case number FTZC24-4C, the final PUD. Mr. Gummens?
So as you mentioned, this is for the final PUD plan review. FTZC24-3C, which is optimized senior living. With the situation of the property, I think we're all familiar with the location. It's at the old Windley Farm. The applicant's here tonight to request approval of final PUD plan. We provided copies of that to the board in advance of the meeting. The applicant, as mentioned in the preliminary plan, planned to utilize multiple buildings that are currently on the property located in Fairfield Township as assisted living facility buildings and one building as a potential adult daycare facility. Again, this is all fairly recent. I don't need to rehash all the previous cases. We had one May, and the board heard this in June. So here's some images of what they have planned for the exterior buildings. I believe this is kind of the style that they're going to go with for all the buildings on site. I don't have exciting explanations, but I'm sure the applicant will later. But it looks very nice to me. And we'll... You can... I'd love to hear about it shortly. And then they also have updated landscaping plans that they'll also mention. But it's, you know, it's a definite upgrade to what's currently there. They've, based on what they've provided, staff believes that it's all consistent with the preliminary plan and the conditions that were placed on the zone change. The three exist... The three conditions that were put on it will continue to be placed on it before the actual zones that gets our approved. So if staff does make the recommendation to approve the final PUD plan and keeping the conditions on this. But that's really all I have to say about it unless the board has a question. To share, if you'd like to speak to her.
Let's do it.
So I'd like to invite the applicant up to speak to this in regards to anything you feel is applicable.
Hello, thank you so much for having us here today. It was a little bit delayed, so thank you. Like you said, that is the front building that is actually on the city of Fairfield property. And the PD is all been approved and everything through them. This is going to mirror, look similar to the other two buildings, the homes that are on the city or Fairfield Township property. So they won't have the alabaster paint, keep the same roof, and paint the shutters and everything else to look just like this. And definitely landscaping. And in the back area, behind the buildings, will be a fenced-off area for both homes to be a safe area for nonmemory care residents. The sidewalks and everything will remain the same. And then the adult daycare building is the one on the far left you see there. It's currently just a large garage, and that is actually part of our phase three. So we're looking at two to four years from now. And when that one will be completely renovated, very good on the inside and outside, and be available to use for an adult daycare facility for the elderly.
Do you agree with the conditions that have been laid out for on the zoning director?
Yes.
I don't have any further questions, do you?
No, I think it looks like a good use for the property. I know this is something we've been talking about for a while, and I think it's a very good iteration for that property and for township.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next thing, items for board discussion. All right. Our next thing is communication. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Fairfield Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please note that this time, the husband says that the board should listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to three minutes each. And first up, we have Sarah Fox Linton. So if you'd like to approach and state your name and address for the record, then you will have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Fox Linton. My address is 6573 Christie Drive, Fairfield Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I live... My husband and I moved to Fairfield Township in 2020. We live in Walden Ponds, very close to the police station. We were very happy to find a house that was so close to, within walking distance to a park that was high on our list of things we were looking for in a house. And so we just, we felt very satisfied to find a house like that. I'm really enjoying Heroes Park. That's been with all the updates. That's been really wonderful. And so, and of course, the new roundabout by Fairfield North. So we really appreciate the different, the new trees in the park by the police station, all the updates the township has put into the community. One thing I would like to bring to the board today is pedestrian safety. With all of the new businesses opening, your Walden Ponds, the land sale from Bridgewater Church, and the car wash, Starbucks, the new businesses by Menards, we have seen a great increase in traffic on Walden Ponds Road near the park. Last year, about a year ago, when we were eating dinner, we were in a helicopter, and we found out later from neighbors that someone had been hit during the crosswalk and was taken to the hospital by helicopter. When we first moved here in 2020, I felt safe letting my kids walk with my to the park by themselves, but I don't feel that way anymore. It's very common for us to have to stand for quite a while and wait until the car stops for us in the crosswalk or until there's traffic slows down for a while. But traffic has gone up quite a bit with all the new businesses, and I expect that with the McDonald's being constructed, that that will increase traffic even more. I would like to ask the board today for some improvements to increase pedestrian safety near that park. Specifically, at the... The name of it escapes me, but that the main park in Fairfield, the Community Arts Center, that Fairfield Springs Park. They have a crosswalk with a light that's pedestrian activated. It's the park that's between the library and the Community Arts Center. And that, I, we go to that park a lot, and I feel it's a really wonderful solution. And so I am requesting that the township install a traffic light like that at this park. And that also there could be some speed bumps before and after the entrance to the park because so many people drive very quickly down Walden Ponds now. The other thing I wanted to request is addressing pedestrian safety at Princeton in Hampshire. Very often, I am driving, and someone will be walking sometimes in the dark in the early morning on the shoulder of the road, presumably to or from work between the apartments and Walmart. And I have narrowly avoided hitting people several times. And it's very scary for me when I'm driving and there's someone walking that close to me on the shoulder. I also noticed that there is no crosswalk at Princeton in Hampshire. And that, I think, is also an area that would really benefit from pedestrian activated waking lights. There's a lot of other pedestrian safety ideas I have for Fairfield Township, but those are two of the biggest ones. A while back, my 12-year-old was riding his bike across the crosswalk from the park. He couldn't really shake it up because he said a driver had screamed and given him the finger when he was in the crosswalk. So I would... I, you know, it's really great to have all the restaurants and they easy access, but with that comes so much more traffic. And so I would like to ask how we can get the ball rolling on manage on making, on keeping pedestrians safe.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
I'm going to... Mrs. Funderhart heard all of that, and I'm going to, with your agreement, will Mrs. Funderhart follow up with some of those things? And then she can reach back to you.
Okay, thank you. And I have a lot of other ideas, too, but I want to go beyond my time. So I may come back and let her... And I'll...
I'll, if Mrs. Funderhart, you could follow up with her later this week, and maybe you could talk through some of those ideas?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Lindsay McLaughlin. All right, so you are, you're on here, so we are all good. And all right, we'll move on. All right, our next thing is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered by the Board of Trustees to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request if second is required for removal of an item. Items removed for separate discussion will be considered after the motion for the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harcomeyer?
Yes. And the consent agenda has been passed. That puts us down to our resolutions, which we have the one that we just added.
We added a motion. So I move to approve the final PUD for FTZC24-3C Final PUD with the three items listed as additional conditions.
Second? Any discussion?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harcomeyer?
Yes. And that passes. We will move on to the fiscal office search report.
Okay, the only thing I have for you tonight is to let you know our seven-half RIT payment came in, $153,000, and our second half property tax rollback came in, $342,000. So that should pretty much wrap up our major income for the year. I will be working on budget soon and getting them to you for 2025. So ahead.
Administrator's report?
I have nothing to report at this time unless you have questions.
I don't have any. We just... Sorry. Could you just give a little very, like, 60-second summary on the safety day that we had?
The one at Home Depot?
Yes.
So that's brought up by Home Depot, and they do a craft for the kids, and then they ask our safety service to come out and be a part of the day. And the nice thing is our volunteers through the Fire Corps and the CAA, which is now called PAFS, they do the bounce houses and help with that. So it's just a nice community project, not product event. Yes, outreach, right, that Home Depot has operated every year. That's always been wrong.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very cool. All right, our committee reports. Nothing on the TID night. Okay, under the Emergency Management Agency, we did have a meeting, another meeting. And one of the topics that came up was increasing the funding for the EMA. So we are in possession of the letter that was given to us. And what they're asking for, our current rate, what we pay, what Fairfield Township pays for the EMA is 39 cents per capita. That has been in place since 2010. Due to salary increases, equipment increases, all of the things that have been happening to everyone, they are now looking at asking for an increase moving into 55 cents in 2025 and 60 cents in 2027. And there is a spreadsheet that you've got right there, and that kind of outlines what the impact would be to Fairfield Township. They are asking this of all of the EMA members, so the townships, the cities, everyone. They're asking everyone to kind of pitch in on that. I would say that the services that Fairfield Township receives along with the other entities in Fairfield Township, the EMA, the Emergency Management Association, or I'm sorry, Emergency Management Agency, we definitely get our value out of that in terms of training, in terms of emergency services. It's just, it's an excellent, outstanding resource here for Walden County. So we're looking at going from 8,800, and then it's going to go to 11,385. Actually, no, the 12,524. And then at the 60 cents, it'll go up to 13,660, too, which I think... and then at the sixty cents, it'll go up to thirteen, six, sixty-two, which I think it's an increase, but it's, I think it's reasonable.
So starting in twenty, so starting in 2025, it would be fifty-five cents, and then you say 2026?
It goes up to a, well, the twenty, twenty-seven, I believe.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah. So it'll go to fifty-five cents in 2025 and sixty cents in 2027.
True. And that's every single government, community in the county has asked for that same, is being asked for that same increase. So you're not paying any more than anybody else, just what everybody else would be paying.
Everybody is, is going to be, it's moving up for everybody. And it says here, these changes will allow the Butler County EMA to address the revenue losses due to rent availability and increased operation expenses due to inflation. So it's kind of what's been happening to everybody across the board.
Sure.
If you want people to work for you, you've got to be a decent salary, and things cost money, so.
Sure.
I don't think it's unreasonable, and.
No.
Again, it's, it's all the townships, it's, it's everybody across the board that's being asked to.
All the townships, all the cities, nobody is speaking in front of it, so.
I think it's fair. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention because we do have a meeting to discuss this, and I did not want to make that decision without bringing it before the board for some discussion.
Good. Seems fair.
Excellent. Okay, okay, I have Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Government, I have that meeting on Thursday morning, so nothing to report there currently on that one. And then the Coalition of Large Urban Townships meeting, I will be going to that meeting, that meeting is at the end of the month, so nothing related to report there. Any board comments?
I don't have any board members. I'm going to thank you to the Girl Scout troop for bringing this project forward and thinking of ways that you can help our community and teaming with Fairfield Township to make it a better place. I think it's an excellent idea to add it right there where our veterans memorial is, because it's a perfect location for it. So I'm, I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to use it.
I've got a flag at home, ready to go. It's not outlisted. Okay. I have no board member comments. All right, we'll move on to announcements, this is going to take me a minute. Our Fairfield Chamber of Commerce annual meeting will be at Receptions in Fairfield Thursday, October tenth, from eleven to one. Our annual Coalition Dinner will be at the Fairfield High School Community Room Thursday, October tenth, 2024, from five-thirty to eight PM. I will not be able to attend that because that's the same night as the Butler County Township Association. I fully support the program, but there, there was another event that night. We've got the Solvita Blood Drive coming up on Friday, October eighteenth, from nine to eleven AM. We've got the Reefs Across America Fun Run, that will be at the Rose Hill Burial Park on Saturday, October nineteenth, at nine AM. We're going to be having a Halloween movie night at Heroes Park Saturday, October nineteenth, from seven to ten PM. We will be holding our Veterans Day event at Heroes Park on Friday, November eighth, at ten AM. Our offices will be closed for Veterans Day on Monday, November eleventh, 2024. Our Fairfield Township City of Fairfield Jet meeting will be on Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at nine AM. And our next Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting will be Tuesday, November twelfth, at seven PM.
I would just like to add that during the Veterans Day celebration, there will be a parade for celebration, starting at East Elementary, making its way down Morris, past North Elementary, and then ending at the memorial site. And hopefully by then, there will be a flag box.
We should address that, too. So people can relax and take their bags. Okay. And we have a, I move in accordance with O R C one twenty-one point two-two, section G one, I move that we go into executive session to consider the discipline, discipline appointment, employment for compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee.
Trustee Markemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Action may or may not be taken as a result of executive session. So we will adjourn now, we're going to head in there, you're welcome to stay, if you like, I don't know how long it'll be, or you're welcome to go. And that would suit you, but thank you for everyone coming out tonight. And a special thanks to the Girl Scout troop, we really appreciate your, your community service here. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to.